All right, well, guess what? It's six o'clock. Yay! All right. Well, it's six o'clock. Let's get, we will call this meeting to order. We'll stand to say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose liberty and justice are.
All right. Thanks, everybody, for joining us tonight, and we're going to start with the administrator's report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School and Sugar Camp School via email to town of Three Lakes, town of Monaco, town of Sugar Camp, and the Demer Library. Media notified via email included the Villas County News, Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and media notified by mail was WACD, WATK Radio.
And I probably should say, I'm Stacy Klein, vice president, filling in for Alicia Williams tonight, just in case nobody knows who I am. All right. Moving on to amendments and approval of the agenda. Any amendments tonight?
No, there are no amendments.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All right. We have a motion by Mitch and a second by Michelle. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Motion passes. Four zero. All right. All right. Moving down to approving the minutes of the February 19th, 2025, regular meeting.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the February 19th, 2025, regular meeting.
I'll second.
All right. Motion by Michelle, second by Mitch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes four zero. All right. We'll move down to approving the vouchers check register for the period of February 14th, 2025 through March 5th, 2025.
I'll make a motion to approve the checks dated February 14th, 2025 through March 5th, 2025, for accounts payable, ACH checks number 242-500-174 through 242-500-205, and regular checks number 130-858 through 130-941, and manual checks number 5817 through 5827, and wire transfers number 2024-00150 through 2024-00184, in the amount of $822,358.18, and ACH payroll checks number 900-44998 through 900-045-249, and regular payroll checks number 59-397 through 59-408, in the amount of $392,557.09, for the total amount of
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mitch and a second by Michelle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. All right. We'll move down to public comments, hearing any comments from visitors regarding any agenda items. Moving down to administrator's report.
Two weeks ago, on February 25th and 26th, admin team was able to join me over two days at Northland Pines. We attended the Department of Justice Safety Training, and it was excellent. It was a lot of sit and get, which none of us are really used to, but it was really good information to get it, you know, in the present time. The first day was really focused on behavioral threat assessment models to really be able to understand where a student's disposition or mindset might be, and how to go through the process as to identifying what the level of risk is to the school. This is generally when you become aware of something that's been going on. The SROs that were in the room were very familiar with it. Some counselors were, but I thought it was really good. It's very much, I think, what our current plan was based off of, but it was good to have the training and go through that, and talk about what-if scenarios. The second day, Justin joined me, and it was focused on the reunification. Should there be, you know, the worst day, then something happens? What the plan is and how you come back together? Who is in charge? Because there's so many moving pieces. I think the most important part that I gathered out of it is, no matter how prepared you are, every situation is going to be unique and different, and you're going to have to be ready to roll with whatever that situation is. And we did a lot of thought and discussion such as, well, it probably shouldn't be the superintendent who's the point of information or the command leader, because they're going to be really dealing a lot with the media, with parent information, which is really a good point, because, you know, we just kind of automatically think, oh, communication, Jen and I talk, and, you know, then it would go all through that. But it's more important in that situation to probably have that contact with your parents. And then, who is that going to be? It ties in really nicely, because we are working on updating our emergency response plan, which we did last year, but you can never be prepared enough. And I think that this is something that's been foremost on my mind, because I do believe there's a lot of questions out there still internally, like, who does what? Like Jeannie Maney used to say, I get the binder and I do this. Well, now we have Ann in that role, and what was good and probably appropriate two or three years ago may not be appropriate now. So we're working on that, I should say, I'm working on that, and going to be bringing it back to the team, and then we'll be bringing it to you again in the next month or two to look at that and do that update of our plan. I would ask if any of the administrators there had anything they wanted to share in addition?
Really good stuff. You said the first day was a little long, because it was all sit and get. Second day was more hands-on, going through situations, mock-up of model situations. That was really helpful.
It was.
And then, much more engaging, for sure. Yeah, the first day was all about figuring out whether or not a threat is credible and what the level of risk is. It's good stuff. Glad we went, for sure. Glad it was up here. We didn't have to travel very far and far.
First, yeah, that's the first time ever, I believe, that they brought it north of 29, thanks to Scott Foster and Northland Pines for kind of beating that drum. I believe for the last three years, there was enough interest to get them up this way. And there was, they had it capped at 60, and the first day, I'm certain, they had all of 60, if not more. And it wasn't just school officials, it was your SROs, it was law enforcement, counselors, health department. It was a really nice coverage of the counties between Villas and Oneida, I would say.
And I think a good takeaway is that the system that they're really promoting is SRP, which is what we're using.
Yes.
Which is what, according to Foster, Scott Foster, that a lot of the Villas County schools, Oneida Counties, Villas are working together now more, right? And it's looking like all of us schools are going to be in the same SRP program, which is super helpful, I imagine, for law enforcement, who's working with us and helping us.
Yeah, so I just wanted to give you an update on that, that that's foremost in our minds, and it was good training, and looking forward to moving that along. Did you guys have any other questions for me regarding that? Okay. I'll tell you, those law enforcement people are pretty funny. They're the ones, when we did role-playing, they were, like, if they got to be a parent, they were not nice. They were like, I don't have time to wait for this. I figured it was based maybe a little bit of experience, but...
Everyone of them are type A's.
It made it fun.
Okay. That's great. Thank you for that. All right. Any other questions on that? Otherwise, we'll move along to new business, April meeting dates, so...
Our next regular meeting will be on April 16th at 6:00 PM here in the boardroom at Three Lakes. This is a regular scheduled meeting, and there's no changes to it, and we don't have any additional meetings that we need at this point.
Okay. All right. All right. Next item is Nexus Facilities Study Update.
Well, we've had a lot of things going on. This past weekend, the large flyer dropped in the mail. I'm hoping that you all got that, the 11 by 17. Thanks to Jen for working so closely with Nexus and me to put our vision as to what we wanted it to be. Keep it simple, but keep it informative, rather than getting buried in so much that is like, you know, I don't know what that is. Neat fact, yesterday, and actually on the weekend, when I was, I did manage to get to church, I've seen two different people carrying that around, so I felt like, hey, that's neat, because they're using it as a reference guide. Then we also had our, since we met last, we had our Monday night meeting in Three Lakes, and that was very well received. We had nice attendance. We had several of our population that maybe are retired and brought great questions, financial questions. I think they were, it was a very positive vibe, even though there was, you know, some really wanting to know. Phil did a nice job addressing some of the facilities' questions, and we were able to talk about where we started from and how we got to that. So, you know, don't be referring to things we talked about two and a half years ago. This is the current, and I felt like the people there really understood and were very supportive. Last night, we had the Sugar Camp meeting, and we had a nice group there as well. Again, very positive. Kevin Mullen came up from Baird, and he joined us, thinking that we might have some more questions directly related to finances after the flyer dropped. There was only a few, and they were good, based on how we would finance and spread that out over, you know, the 20, 21-year period. I really thank everybody for stepping up, especially Jen and Justin for taking the lead last night, because I didn't know how much I could talk, and I was like, Justin, you'll have this. He can tell a good story. It went really well. And I just felt a very positive vibe again. We had some Three Lakes people that came down, asked questions, but very supportive of the district. Next week, the referendum, or to vote, credit card, postcard will be dropping in the mail, so that will be coming as the reminder, because we're really getting close now. We're under three weeks, so that's going to go very quickly. And then tomorrow night is going to be Blue Jay Trivia Night at the Brew Station, so that should be a fun adventure. And Jen, do you have any update on that?
It's, I think it'll be fun. It'll be a good way to present information, so...
Yeah, I do, too.
I've learned all sorts of weird stuff in the last week. I didn't know.
We've taken some phone calls. I have not gotten any emails recently. I would say it's dropped just about not getting them. I feel like our public is really well-informed. I take that as the reason I'm not getting as much requests for why does this work or how does this work? But when we think back on it, it's been pretty intense over the last month or six weeks of getting that out, and then the social media posts, and I think those little snippet facts have been really helpful, too, keeping it in mind.
And I think it's been really rewarding to watch the fruit of the community group unfold, like, as they, they're able to share what they learned in the group with other community members. That has been nice to watch. That was, I'll admit, I doubted the process at first, but I see how well it worked.
That's what we have on that.
Any other questions or anything else on that? All right. All right. We're going to move on to considering the approval of personnel report of new hires and resignations.
This month, we have two new hirings. Patricia Manley is a volunteer track and field coach, and Don Meter is a volunteer assistant girls soccer coach, and there are no retirements.
All right. Looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Josh and a second by Mitch. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes four zero. Thank you. All right. Moving down to consider approval of revision to Board Policy 3233, specifically to graduation pathways.
This is the follow-up to last month's meeting, when Justin spoke to you about another alternative pathway for our students who are credit deficient to reach their graduation diploma, and we do have some students who could potentially benefit from this immediately. We did receive word just yesterday, was it, Justin, that that was approved by, was that by DPI?
Yes.
That they have approved our program request. To bring it all up to par, we need to add a line to our current policy that outlines what this addition is. Being that this is not a brand-new policy, I do not believe we have to do two readings of it. If we were creating a brand-new policy, then I would suggest that we do, but where we already have the approval and we're just revising what's already currently on the books, you can go ahead, and if you support this, make that motion tonight. The language is included there, the main part being the addition of when the student has satisfactorily completed the requirements of an alternative pathway to a high school diploma provided by the Three Lakes School District, such as the Wisconsin GED Option II Program, or a blend of GED equivalency assessments, and high school course credits. I'd like to invite Justin to share any additional thoughts on that.
Just a little specific information about why it's worded the way it is, or we're suggesting it be worded the way it is, is an example, oh, let's just say hypothetically, a student transfers here from a high school in the Milwaukee area, comes here and is all good, except has all of their science credits deficient. What we could do, then, is only employ the GED Option II battery of tests for the science requirements, and she's making, or he, or making all of the other requirements based on the credits in our requirements as traditionally that we have for all the other departments. So that's why that last little narrative is in there, or wording is in there, so that that particular student wouldn't need to do all of the GED Option II tests, which is a pretty extensive battery of tests, but only the one where the student would be credit deficient when they come here. And like I said last month, we don't have a ton of severely credit-deficient students that have been with us, but we do have some who transferred in, opened and rolled in, whatever, moved to the area that are, and that's, at this point in time, those are the students we're trying to have a light at the end of the tunnel for them.
Great explanation. Any questions for me?
Anything else on that? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to approve the revision of the Board Policy 3233.
I'll make a motion to approve the revision to Board Policy 3233, specifically to graduation pathways.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Michelle and a second by Josh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes four zero. Next on the agenda is consider approval of CISA Shared Services Contract.
I bring this to you every spring. They have to finalize their budget by April 15th, and the amount is very similar to what you saw last year. What we do with, when we do the CISA projected budget, and to what it actually turns out to be, is often less than what you are seeing here. But we always want to make sure that we are making CISA aware that if we're looking for a specific teacher, that's really hard to get, like, a visually impaired teacher, or a deaf and hard-of-hearing, or anything of this nature. We want to make sure that we have those services accounted for, because everybody is fighting over them. Working with CISA has been very positive. I was reminded again last week that this will be adjusted to your actual costs at the end of the year, which makes me feel very confident, and that this gives both Caleb and CISA nine the figures we need for projecting our budgeting. If you don't have specific questions to that, I would ask that you would approve it tonight, so I can get this to them for their Board of Control meeting.
Any questions for us? All right. Looking for a motion?
Make a motion to approve the CISA Shared Services Contract for the 2024 and 2025.
Second.
We have a motion by Mitch and a second by Michelle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion passes four zero. All right. Moving along to winter sports report.
Yes, ma'am. Starting out with boys' basketball this year, we had 21 overall players. Varsity consisted of 10 players. We had an 11- and 13th overall record, and a 6- and 4 record within the conference. The team for regionals beat Tri-County here at home in round one, and then the second game, round two, we ended up losing to Pacelli. If you were there, it was a pretty fantastic game. We led at halftime, and, you know, we definitely had Pacelli on the ropes. Mike Tyson had a saying back in the day, everybody's got to play until you get punched in the mouth. If you watched Pacelli's kids walk off the floor. But second half, it's, you know, we had a lead, and they whittled it away and ended up winning by three, but it was a fantastic game, just unbelievable game, and George really had those kids ready to play. Just a real quick guarantee from George, it says, "We had a very difficult schedule this season, but the kids were able to compete in every game against some very good schools." I think that there's a lot of positives throughout the season. Everyone learned that if you want to succeed, you have to play hard with high level of effort. So he said, "I try making the point to kids that succeeding in life is the same way. Nothing is given, only earned." I think all of the kids drew in maturity and responsibility throughout the year. We graduate four seniors, and we'll have some rebuilding to do next year, but I'm optimistic that some summer league opportunities that we will be in will get us ready at the beginning of the season. I am extremely proud of the team and how they battled all year long. We faced some adversity with illnesses and other issues, and the kids never lost hope or gave up. Great group of kids that I respect, and very much am excited to work with them again next year. Jordy Lurbe. All-conference, we had two first-teamers this year, that was Easton Lurbe as a freshman and Peyton Pitlick as a senior. Second team was Eli Erickson, senior, and honorable mention was Owen Leepsher, 10th grade sophomore. So overall, a really good job with a pretty tough schedule they really did have. JV for the boys, we had 11 overall JV players. Their overall record was 16 and 6. Moving on to girls' basketball, we had 19 overall players. Obviously, you know we co-op with Phelps. We had one Phelps, or two Phelps players, and nine overall varsity players. We had a 10- and 14 overall record and a 2- and 6 NLC conference record. Regionals, we received a forfeit from Rothschild in the first game, because they had a girl got hurt real bad on the Friday night before, and they had a couple other kids quit, so they were unable to play the game. So we advanced by forfeit, and we ended up losing to Pacelli in the semifinals. It was a tough game. So, Rich's quick narrative, it says, "We entered this season with an optimistic vision of improving from the previous season, having three of five starters returning in addition of a transfer student. Paige Brafford was the goal to be a 500 season." It says, "Unfortunately, that wasn't the case, and the team ended up with the same number of wins, 10 and 14. Several factors contributed this outcome. We played several tough teams, but playing consistent team basketball for 36 minutes, consistent individual performances, shooting percentages, and most glaring statistic was turnovers. Though the coaching staff focused almost daily on involved security and patience, we were unable to reduce turnovers to an acceptable number. However, in the games where those numbers were somewhat lower, we either won those games or were very competitive throughout. Injuries also played a part as well, losing Paige Brafford and Cassidy Williams to concussions for several games affected our strength on the court. There were, however, several highlights during the season. Come-from-behind win at Tomahawk in overtime, wins over Northland Pines, Crivets, Mellon, and Sturgeon Bay, scoring a team-high 70 points. The team is, the team in most games played exceptional defense and rebounded almost every game." Rich Javikos. For girls' all-conference, we had a first-teamer, Haley Barnikow. Second-team all-conference, Paige Brafford. An honorable mention, Malia Zeus, as a freshman. Pretty impressive. JV, we had 10 JV players, and obviously JV from varsity, depending on the week, that did fluctuate some, but there was 10 solid JV players. Their overall record was an impressive 19 and 1. So mostly freshman girls on that JV. As we move forward, we're going to have some pretty strong folks coming up, so, and that's without Malia and without a couple other students that are just fantastic kids that were playing varsity ball, so good things to come there. And lastly, wrestling, obviously we varsity co-op with Layla Obino. They had 15 overall varsity wrestlers and one from Three Lakes. 12 and 4 overall dual record, which is pretty impressive. The team finished 14th in the holiday tournament out of 75 teams. They sent six wrestlers to sectionals this year and sent two to state, and Regan Roy was a state champion, as you could see, so that's pretty impressive. And I will note that in our junior high, we had eight wrestlers coming up this year that stuck with it throughout the year, so I'm hopeful that through time, maybe we can get our own program back again, but right now, it's going to see how that, if those kids continue to stay out and continue to be part of that program. Hockey, we had a couple students in that. I didn't get a report from Legas over it. He never sent anything my way, but I know that Ryan Lander had a rough time in hockey this year. But as a freshman, we had, we had a freshman boy do really well. It's the playing boy, when he plains boy, he stuck it out. He had a rough start, but ended up finishing pretty strong, so. So that is the report. So if anyone has questions, please do.
Thank you, Phil.
Great, yes, thank you. Great report. All right. No further questions. We'll move along to the School Forest Camp 3 update report.
The only thing I have to report on is that the summary judgment hearing has been scheduled for May 15th, 2025, at 2:00 PM in Branch 1 courtroom of Oneida County Courthouse. So that is on the docket, and we will be planning to attend that as it is held.
Any questions on that? All right. Hearing none, we'll move along to district-related positive happenings.
Three Lakes Elementary had their spelling bee last week. We had a fourth grader, Thomas Berry, was the winner, is pretty, most excited kid I've seen in spelling bee for a while. Adalia Byer took second place, and Malika Volkman was third. So to have a fourth grader win is, doesn't usually happen, so it was kind of fun. Mr. Waltz's crew did their overnight camping trip. All positive reviews there. It sounded like it was a great time, so he's hoping to make that an annual thing. And then, Mr. Volk and teachers are on their ski trip tomorrow with most of our crew. Hopefully, it's a nice day here for me. Anyone want to play curvy with me?
I can follow that. Sutton Pitlick took second place at state for speech on blueberry algae. We also had our spelling bee shortly after our last board meeting. The seat of Padlock took first. She's a sixth grader, and Ainsley Pitlick took second, and she's a fourth grader.
Tomorrow in the building, shout-out to the forensics team. Recently competed at the regional competition over at Marinette, and all seven punched their ticket to the state tournament. That's fantastic. Congratulations to coach him and the crew there, for sure. Soul and Ensemble, recently, we can go Friday Soul and Ensemble, recently, Friday was held at Florence. We had four of our performances from the choir that earned high enough ratings to go to state. And in band, our large, not large, our group ensemble and percussion is going on to state. So a lot of one ratings as well in both choir and band, so a good showing there.
Junior high, we started up our inter-merals program for basketball and kids are pretty excited about it. If you want to come on in at lunchtime and watch. The other kids that aren't playing, they're all standing and watching. I'm sure that's pretty crazy, so.
It was loud in there today. What is going on in this?
They were very excited about it. That's all I hear about.
So, yeah, it's fun to do. So they seem to enjoy that and will continue it on, so.
We recently took the A C T, too. That's, I'm super excited. How do you say it? Inter-merals, well, for sure. But the junior class got it done and our other classes did a virtual day that day. So it's a good thing to be done with. We'll find out in five to seven weeks how we did.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move down to W S A B Correspondence and Updates.
The only correspondence I have for you is the new magazine came out, so it's in the folder if you want to take a look at that. Otherwise, there was nothing else to report.
All right, well, we are going to adjourn to Executive Session. Wisconsin State's nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction of exercises responsibility, specifically to consider individual staff contracts, hiring and/or resignations, retirements of staff. And then B, approve the minutes of the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five executive session. Can I get a motion to move to executive session, please?
I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mitch, excuse me, and a second by Michelle and we'll do a roll call to move to executive. Josh?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mitch?
Aye.
Stacy? Aye. All right, motion passes for zero and.